But there it is.
Calling to order the Monday, August 9th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilor, Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Henon?
Here.
Councilmember Price?
Here.
Mayor Turbrack?
Here.
Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any changes or additions? Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. With us this evening is Pastor Zach Dunlap.
Let's pray. Good and loving God, thank you for the opportunity to live, work, worship, learn, pray, grow, eat, shop, and make music in this wonderful community of Berkeley. We come from many different faith traditions and belief systems, yet we are united in our pursuit of the common good. May we truly look for the good in each person. May you grant us and our mayor and city council members wisdom and discernment to lead well, and may you empower us to set aside our differences and truly love our neighbors as ourselves. In the strong name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will now move to public comments, and just as we did last time, please bear with me for a few minutes so I can go through the process because we have a number of different folks with us today, possibly. Per our normal rules and procedures, you may comment on specific agenda items while they are being considered and as we have done in the past at normal in-person meetings. Councilmembers still will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff, please sign your name on the, at the clerk's table there. For those attending in person, you will have the opportunity to speak in just a moment. You can simply come up to the podium, state your name and city of residence just as normal. For those attending virtually, participants in the webcast can utilize the Raise Your Hand function by selecting Manage Participants in the bottom of your dashboard, and then select the More button in the bottom right-hand corner, and our moderator will call your name and unmute you so that you can speak when it is your turn. If you have called in, please select *9 or hit *9 on your phone. That will put you in the queue, and you will be announced by the last four digits of your phone number when it is your turn to comment. Again, in the virtual environment, you will have three minutes to speak, and once the three minutes are up, you will be muted by the moderators. Additionally, we will read public comments that were emailed to the clerk prior to 5:00 p.m. today, and we will make sure that those electronic communications are part of the public record. So we're going to do this in a couple turns here, and we're going to follow the same thing throughout the evening when it comes time to comment on events. So the first thing we're going to do is I'll open it up to anybody here for public comments, again, items that are not included on tonight's agenda. Then I will ask the clerk if there are any email communications, and thirdly, we will go to our folks that are visiting with us virtually. Make sense? Hopefully. If not, I apologize. All right. We will now begin with those folks that are with us today, in person. Man, I said all that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm a Berkeley resident. My name is Jamie Stephanian Bennett, and I am here in support of the small business community here. As a resident, not a business owner here, but specific to, if I look at the agenda specifically, is Resolution Number R-27-21, and I wanted to state my support, representing a great deal of my neighbors, colleagues, and friends here in town to voice my support of extending the temporary outdoor dining. There has been a great deal of pride that we've had even throughout COVID by inviting friends and family members to these outdoor spaces, bringing people to town, and we feel that it will only help the efforts of the DDA and other businesses to come into town when they see Berkeley act in such a progressive manner with the blood, sweat, and tears that so many of our small business community have made to stay in business, let alone thrive. And so we want our small businesses here to thrive, and I state my full unequivocal support of our small business community.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yep.
Again, we're talking about items that are not covered on the agenda. We will certainly get to that, and I will make sure that we reinforce-
I just wanted to start it off with this one because I'm very passionate about these guys.
At least coming up to the microphone. Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments for any other items that are not covered on tonight's agenda? All right. Ms. Harold, did you receive any email communications to be read into the public record?
No, I did not, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mathis, we will now switch over to our hybrid version. Anybody virtually like to comment?
I believe so. Steve, if you want to unmute yourself, you can go ahead. I have trouble shooting right here.
Is there a?
Oh, can you guys hear me okay?
That's better.
It's getting a little bit better.
Yes.
Okay. I'll adjust the volume over here. Steve, if you have anything to say, you can go ahead and speak.
Okay, thank you very much, members of council and Honorable Mayor. I'd like to correct a little something that had transpired. Prior to myself and Paul resigning from the Zoning Board of Appeals, we did have a conversation with you on the telephone. Subsequently, it was said in that last PC meeting that there were discussions ongoing with staff and council people. That is absolutely not true. I talked to six of the seven that were seated at the time of the resignation. They have not heard anything from anyone other than Dennis Henon, who contacted them and said, "If you have anything you need information on, please feel free to ask." I don't know what happened with that, but, you know, I, it's very frustrating. We need to get this out on the table, and we need people to understand what happened. This is a learning opportunity. If we don't take advantage of it, it's really, really silly. And I know for a fact that a number of members of the Planning Commission are not very happy about this either. What this kind of stuff does is it really degrades the ZBA and the Planning Commission, and I just wanted to say that and get it out in the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Ms. Mathis, who's next?
Chief Tim, do you have anything to say for today? I'm going to have to go ahead and mute yourself. There you go.
Yeah, there you go. You know, my comments as a restaurant owner and seeing the conversations that have happened at different meetings and conversations I've had with business owners, it really comes down to a decision of whether we want to be together as Berkeley businesses or if we want to remain divided and kind of protect our acorns. But I think we need to, you know, it's, if this doesn't pass, it's really a vote for division, and it's out of fear. If we are able to drive any sort of restaurant or retail business to Berkeley, everybody wins. I just don't understand the opposition. We want businesses to succeed, and that's really my two cents, is to commit to some growth for Berkeley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and again, we will be commenting on that agenda item later, and there will be an opportunity for those with us virtually as well to be able to comment while we're discussing that item. Ms. Mathis, who is next?
That is all I see at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Sure.
Cindy Coon, 2772 Cummings. I just wanted to put out the good news that we have our silver medalist, Kate Nye, who will be one of our grand marshals at the Cruz Fest Parade. We also are honoring our first responders. There's a family in particular here in the city, and also all of our public safety officers. So we're pretty proud about that.
Thank you, Cindy, and thank you for being instrumental, I know, in making sure that Katie was available at here and would be able to participate. So thank you so much. That's awesome. Anybody else before we wrap up public comments? All right. We will move on to our order of business this evening. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Harold, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 38th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, July 19th, 2021. Two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1365. Motion number M-44-21. Matter of approving to cast Berkeley's official vote for the following to serve as a trustee on the Board of Trustees for the MML Workers' Compensation Fund, directing the city clerk to send in a marked ballot. Vote for three incumbent trustees and first, and two first-time trustees for a four-year term beginning October 1st, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Harold. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Price. Are there any comments or changes from council? Are there any questions or comments from those that are with us in person? Ms. Mathis, anybody on the virtual side?
Not at this time, sir.
Thank you. Seeing no comments, Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Harold, would you please read item
number one?
Recognitions, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda, we will move on to item number two, please.
Motion number M-45-21. Matter of authorizing the Berkeley Orchestra Association, 2325 Catelpa Drive, Berkeley, Michigan, to conduct Berkeley Tag Days 2021 in the City of Berkeley on Friday, October 8th, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, October 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday, October 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve M-4521?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henon with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to see this come back to us. This application has been reviewed by each of the appropriate departments. As noted in the application packet, students will stand outside businesses and sing and play instruments. They will have a bucket to collect donations, and these funds, these will go to the purchase of instruments, scholarships, music support programs, and the like. The reason this comes before council is because this does take place in the public's right-of-way. That's owned by the city, so they come every year, and they're always very diligent about filling out the proper paperwork, and it's, this item has been recommended by the departments that reviewed it for approval.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Mr. Baumgarten from council?
We reviewed all our stuff, and everything looks good. The insurance is up to date, and so, and everything looks fine.
Figured if you were good with a jack, we would be, we would be okay. Other questions? Any other comments? As Mr. Baumgarten, as a manager, mentioned, we are certainly excited to see this able to come back, as we've seen some other events slowly but surely beginning to come back. Saw last week. We've got a few more coming up in the following weeks. As long as we can continue to do these things safely, it's good to see, certainly. Any comments from anybody here, or is anybody representing the Orchestra Association today? Either here or virtually?
No one here virtually.
Nobody here virtually, okay. Well, with that, and seeing no additional comments, Ms. Harold, then would you please call the roll on M-4521?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number three, please.
Motion number M-46-21. Matter of authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between SMART and the City of Berkeley for fiscal year 2022 for municipal credit and community credit funds in order to provide public transportation services for the period of July 1st, 2021, to June 30th, 2022.
Is there a motion to approve M-4621?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an annual item that continues our contractual relationship with the, with the SMART organization. As noted in the applicant, or the memo from your recreation director, these, these services have been absolutely crucial in the past 18 months or so. As sometimes, our department has been the only ones that have been available to take our most vulnerable populations to the, get the groceries, go to doctor's appointments that they, that they depend on regularly. So SMART annually gets this to us a little bit after our fiscal year, so this year is no different there. But we've had a long history of putting these to good use.
Any questions for city manager?
The county manager.
Councilmember Blanchard?
I'd like to let people that are watching know that this is $40,500 that we get to provide this service, so it's quite a significant chunk of money, and our Parks and Rec people put it to very good use to ensure that our senior citizens can get where they need to get, and doctor's appointments, that sort of thing. So it's great to get the money, and it's well-used by our city.
Yes, incredibly well-used and very important, especially as we saw over the past year and a half. Other, Councilmember Price?
Yes. Mr. Baumgarten, could you tell any residents who might be hearing about this program tonight, a little bit about what they would need to do to make use of it?
We have a fantastic Parks and Rec staff. I would say that should be anybody's first call. If they're interested in making use of these wonderful services, Dan McMinn, our Senior Services Coordinator, would be a fantastic person to reach out to through the Rec Department. Anybody there would be able to help them, but Dan McMinn does a wonderful, wonderful job of being our point person for each of these services, sometimes even going as far as being the driver of the day even. That's how involved he is with this program. So that'd be my first thing. If anybody asked me that question, I would say, "Reach out to Dan McMinn. He'll get you signed up," and even if something's not initially available, they make every stride possible to make sure that you get the service that you're looking for.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? I feel like this is a little early.
I know.
Smart. I think this is earlier than normal. I feel like this is like an October thing.
Usually they're October late this time, they're only August late.
Yeah, okay, well, let's make it happen earlier. Are there any comments or questions from anybody that is with us today in person? Ms. Mathis, any virtual comments?
Sure, yeah, we do have Mr. McMinn here, if you'd like to hear.
Oh, wow.
Star of the show himself. My apologies, Mayor.
Oh, boy. Dan, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. As Mr. Baumgarten said, this is a contract that comes to you every year. We are, I am happy to report that we are running our services in full capacity at this time. That means doctor's appointments, grocery stores, hair salons, you know, the works. We run Monday through Friday, 8:30 till about 4:00 p.m. each day. You can make an appointment by calling the rec center at 248-658-3470 between the hours of 9:00 and 11:30 to make an appointment for those rides. Our boundaries are 8 Mile to 16 Mile, Loser to John R., so that's just a little bit more information to Ms. Price's question earlier. So again, our phone number is 248-658-3470, and we will do everything that we can to help you out, get you to and from your appointments, and I cannot thank our drivers enough, James Dunlap and Tim Renaud. They've been working throughout this pandemic, and they deserve the most praise I can offer. They are both in the senior demographics, so they are not only out there doing great work, but they're also putting their, themselves in, at risk. We are still requiring masks as we are public transportation, so when you're riding, you just have to wear a mask and give us a call again if you, if you need any assistance.
Well, thank you, Dan. If we knew you were here, which I probably should have asked before, if you were with us today, I wouldn't have made Mr. Baumgarten pretend to say all those nice things about you before. Dan, I didn't hear, do you want to give out your personal cellphone too for everybody? I heard you give out, no, I'm just kidding, Dan. I'm, I am just kidding.
Good question.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor. How far in advance would someone have to call to reserve a ride?
Absolutely. We do suggest at least a two-day in advance to, for us to provide time to get the drivers their schedules. However, we do allow people to call months in advance. If you have an appointment in December, call now, and we can get you on the schedule for then. We do ask for two days, as I said, but if you have something further down the line, we are more than willing to get those on the books for you at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. McMinn? No? All right. Well, Dan, thank you for being with us this evening to answer some of those questions and to provide some additional context and recognize the drivers. We've, you know, internally spoken about that, so I am very glad that you were able to mention them and thank them for the work that they provided. Any comments from anybody else? Okay. Seeing no additional comments, Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on M-4621?
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number four, please, Ms. Harold.
Motion number M-47-21. Matter of authorizing Hubble, Roth, and Clark for professional design and engineering services related to the Kenmore/Cornwall Road reconstruction and water main replacement project at a cost not to exceed $149,303.70. Funding has been allocated in the road millage and water service accounts 313-938-821-000 and 592-536-821-000.
Is there a motion to approve M-4721?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we talked about way back in 2018, where we asked voters for their support in putting substantial investments in our roads, they would see both small patches, medium patches, and large and full reconstructions. We have done the first of those two, and now we are bringing to you the scope and tasks involved in doing the third category as well. So in this situation, it would be the Kenwall, Kenmore and Cornwall sections as outlined in your, in your packets. There's also a, the full scope is included in your packet, as well as the individual task and project thresholds as well. So as you can see with us in person is Derek Schuler and Roland Alex, our DPW Director, as well as our engineering partner.
Mr. Schuler, Mr. Alex, good to see you this evening. I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baumgarten, Mayor and City Council. So before you tonight is our recommendation for the next phase, I guess what we call Year Three, 2022, which is a road and water main reconstruction project similar to Harvard back in 2017, a half-mile section. So, and I'm joined by Roland Alex, Vice President from HRC. Selecting the next road is, took quite a bit of time, and what we did is we took the Pazer Road rankings as well as the water main rankings, and working closely with HRC, put those together and identified basically our half dozen worst half-mile segments, which are shown on the map that we provided to council. Just to let everybody know what those roads were, that's Wiltshire west of Woodward, two sections of Bacon, Cumberland north of 12 Mile, Harvard east of Coolidge, and then the Cornwall/Kenmore section as well. So those were the six that rose to the top, and ultimately, we selected Kenmore and Cornwall because it had the most water main breaks over the last five years. Also, Consumers Energy is going to be replacing the gas main this fall on that street, so that's a significant factor as well. So we've, we've settled on that street. That'll be our next half-mile segment with your approval. Design takes several months. We're hoping to bid this out during the winter months and then have construction start next spring. The estimated construction cost is around $2.5 million, so a significant expenditure. We'll be using road millage funds as well as water main funds to fund that. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I'm sure there's a few. Roland and I can answer those.
Mr. Schuler, just to compare the scope, as you mentioned, 2017 Harvard Project, what is the difference in the cost four years later?
I think it's really just increased in cost, per se. It's a very similar segment. We're doing the exact same things. We do have a little bit more in there for replacing any lead service lines that we encounter, so there's a little bit addition there, but by and large, it's the same scope of work. It'll be sidewalk, new road, and new eight-inch water main.
Questions for Mr. Schuler and Mr. Alex? Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you guys for bringing this to us tonight and for your diligence in identifying where the trouble spots are on our city streets and doing the best we can to prioritize and make these tough decisions. Limited resources, I think this was a good deciding, a decision approach that you took. Looking ahead, obviously, you gave us a rough timeframe of when, you know, obviously, ground isn't going to be broken anytime soon, but looking ahead to when we approach those, those times, could you just share with us a little bit about the communication that'll take place with the residents that'll be affected either directly or indirectly, how we communicate with them and keep them abreast of timing? So there's a communication question, and secondly, the notion of trees. So as I recall, on the Harvard Project, which I think was a great success, a lot of the, the wonderful trees along that road were unfortunately taken as part of that project. Do we anticipate any kind of, you know, similar considerations for trees this time? So communication with residents and trees.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll go ahead and start with the trees. Trees are going to be a big issue for us, and we're going to make every attempt to save trees. We're going to follow the same, I guess, procedure that we used for Harvard, which was to work with the engineers to identify the locations where we needed to have the arborists look at the trees. Ultimately, the arborist is going to look at all the trees, and we're going to make a decision about what can be saved and what has to be removed. There are going to be constraints, whether it's elevations, size of easement, those are sort of things that are going to come into play, obviously, the health of the tree also, but we're going to work closely with them to identify what can be saved and what unfortunately cannot, and we'll communicate that to everybody. I am happy to say that with the Harvard Project, one of, I guess, one of the things that we're proud of is we were able to plant more trees ultimately than were removed. We did have to remove some trees with Harvard, but we were able to plant more. We've got a lot of big trees on the north side, and we're going to make every attempt to try to save those, but we're going to have constraints. We're going to have grading constraints. This is going to be all-new concrete curb and gutter. We need to make sure that the right-of-way drains towards the road, so we need to, HRC, looking at elevations to make sure that we've got the proper elevation ultimately, but trees are going to be a big story in this, and I suspect after HRC gets going on design, we'll be having several meetings to determine, you know, where we're going. Can we shift the road a little bit to save some trees? You know, I'm perfectly willing to entertain that option. Obviously, there's trees on both sides, but, you know, can we do some things to try to save trees? We're more than willing to try to do that. Communication-wise, I don't know if many remember, but on the Harvard Project, we had a meeting on the street in the fall. I'm certainly not opposed to doing that again. It was pretty well-attended. We deliver resident notices, working closely with HRC regularly. There were several notices delivered with Harvard, at least a half dozen. I suspect we'll be doing the same thing, encouraging residents to look at their own utilities beforehand. It obviously makes sense to look at your own lines before we come in and tear up the right-of-way, so that'll be one of the key things that we focus on as well. So there'll be many opportunities for communications, getting email addresses, having that, that meeting on-site if, if folks want to attend, as well as distributing the flyers. So a lot more to come, and really, that communication plan starts pretty quick, so we'll be looking to get that going as soon as possible because some of these things can take some time.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I noticed we're going from a six-inch wireline to an eight-inch wireline. Is this going to tie into the part on Webster where we came off the New Coolidge line to make that a, a complete circuit, which is something we've been talking about for years?
It is. It, it is, and so we're going to upsize this main, which will help us with fire flows. We're also going to be doing a little bit of, uh, water main work along Webster, so we're going to pick up where we left off last time and extend that water main to the west and connect in with a new eight-inch main.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the residents understand that this is being funded by both the infrastructure bond that we passed and their water bills, because some of their water bills go into a fund, and the fund is used for fixing water main breaks, and hopefully, in the long term, replacing the water mains, so we don't have to fix the water main breaks, so. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Henen?
Yes, uh, I have two questions after my three question was taken. Um, uh, the first is, you know, this is an area that we've had some historic basement flooding, so is there anything in this project that'll help mitigate that in the future?
So we'll be, um, this section does have, uh, as far as I know, a full restricted cover, so we'll be maintaining that. I will say that, um, the existence of the curb and gutter section here is pretty well nonexistent. Um, and we have roads that, several roads that have that as well, so I think we'll be able to more efficiently store water in the road section without it having to extend, uh, into folks' front yards. So I think that's a positive with that. Uh, we're going to make sure that the line is, uh, structurally lined as we always do and maintain those restricted covers. HRC suggested, and I think it's a great idea, that we explore a green infrastructure alternative here as well. Um, so we're excited about that. I, I don't know where that's going to end up for us, but we're looking at the triangle there in the middle section to see if we can incorporate some type of green infrastructure. Again, I appreciate HRC suggesting that. I think it's a great idea. We'll see where it ends up, but that might be another way of assisting with the stormwater.
And the, uh, other question I have is, it, it comes to me frequently. There's often a conception that, uh, concrete lasts longer and, you know, is more of value, so why is it that the city, you know, uses asphalt on many of our roads?
Sure. So we view asphalt, um, for residential applications as the preferred method, and, and the main thing that comes up for me at least is that you're able to, you know, mill and overlay that surface after it reaches its life expectancy very easily and cost-effectively, which, concrete, you've got to do full-depth, uh, replacement on that, uh, on a very similar lifespan. So, um, we're very happy with how Harvard has held up. Um, I would encourage anybody to take a look. The road has done very well. It is an extremely beefy cross-section, meaning it's very thick. There's a, a deep stone base course, uh, with that, HRC recommended, and it's held up very well. So we're very happy with that section. I do think it is, in the long run, the best alternative for Berkeley.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean.
Thank you. I'm, I was really happy to see the, um, green infrastructure, the potential for, you know, the stormwater retention, so kudos to you, Roland, and, and your team for bringing that up. I do have a question about the lead service lines. How do, so are you testing every home, um, to see if there's lead? Or do you know going into it, do you have a, an idea of which ones might be?
You know, unfortunately, we don't have a, a great idea of this. You know, we have old water service cards that give us some information on the city side, but that's not always the case on the private side. Um, so I think what we're going to have to do is do a little bit of exploration, um, at the stop box, which is near the curb, to determine how many of those that we have, um, and then react from there. So it's going to take, you know, a little bit of exploratory work to determine how many lead services that we have.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Alex, you're with us this evening. Normally, I see you in your basement. Uh, thank you for, for being with us. Any, uh, anything you'd like to add, um, on the project?
Um, not really. I do love coming to Berkeley meetings, because Derek does such a great job of explaining the project, and, uh, I only get softball, so, um, no, I, I think Derek did a great job. It, it is exciting for the community to be investing in, in your infrastructure. Um, you know, if, if you're not putting money towards your roads, towards your sewers, towards your water mains, they're only going to continue to deteriorate, and somebody's going to have to pay that bill in the future. So, kudos to, um, the council for being proactive and the residents, uh, recognizing that it's a need that needs to be addressed now and not just kicked down the road like so many communities do, so. I have nothing else, though. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, for being with us. Um, and I think what Mr. Schuler said a few minutes ago is important. If you haven't seen Harvard or driven on Harvard to, to, to get a sense of what it looks like now, uh, there, there's certainly a stark contrast, and in general, a lot of that is the curbs and the gutters that are not super-existent on many of our roads anymore, not, at least a lot of them. Um, and, and that, as Mr. Schuler mentioned, higher curbs are not going to hold that water there instead of creeping up through front lawns and sidewalks, hopefully. Um, certainly not on its own going to help, but just the, the contrast in how the road looks and travels, um, certainly is what we want to see every road. Uh, if, in an ideal world, we'd be able to do that. Obviously, we can't, so we're trying to plan these roads every four to five years. When we have the opportunity, we have the funds, we can save to, to make a project like this happen, but it is very exciting when it does happen, and especially once we're able to complete this. As was mentioned, there will be a lot more conversation, um, as we get closer to what the process actually looks like, and the timelines, and certainly the trees is, is going to be an important part of, of what we do moving forward. This is, uh, the first step to having HRC get cracking, right? Okay. Any comments from anybody that is with us in the audience today? Ms. Mathis, any comments, uh, with those visiting with us virtually today?
I've seen no hands raised at this time.
Okay. Well, seeing nobody else, thank you both for being with us. And Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on M-4721?
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henen.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. We now move on to item number five, please, on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-48-21, matter of approving the appointments to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Is there a motion to approve M-4821?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henen with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you have four appointments before you, before you this evening. Uh, two alternate members to the ZVA as well as two regular full members. Uh, the two alternates this evening are Mark Riley, uh, for a term that would expire next year, July 1st, 2022. And next, the other alternate is Joanne Sir, uh, with an appointment expiring, uh, July 1 of 2024. Uh, your next two are full members, uh, Kevin Willner as a regular member with a term expiring of 2023, as well as Eric McDonald, who previously served as an alternate, uh, being promoted, if you will, to a full regular board appointment, uh, expiring 20, uh, July 1, 2024. So that is the slate before you this evening.
Thank you. Uh, questions or comments from council on our volunteers this evening? Well, certainly, we all want to thank them for their service, as we've talked about in the past. Um, you know, the volunteers in these boards and, and commissions, advisory boards are certainly the backbone of much of what we are able to do up here as council members. It's incredibly important, and these folks continue to, to give their time and talents, um, to our community, and we are incredibly grateful. Any comments from anybody with us this evening? Ms. Mathis, you know what's coming?
None at this time, sir.
Not at this time. All right. Well, I want to thank all four of them, as I mentioned, for, uh, volunteering their time and their talents for our community, and I'm sure they're all on pins and needles right now, waiting to see if they get approved. So, Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on M-4821?
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henen.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. We now move on, Ms. Harold, to item number six, please.
Resolution number R-27-21, matter of extending R-20-20 for temporary outdoor slash seating and outdoor sales and service areas, and to allow temporary enclosures in the outdoor areas in response to COVID-19 closures and restrictions.
Is there a motion to approve R-2721?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean. I heard Councilmember Blanchard, as well as two, three other people. Mr. Baumgart.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, COVID still remains, uh, part of our daily lives here. As you can probably tell, even if, uh, every day when you look at the news, or, or even this evening with, uh, those of us, um, you know, still in the situation where we have to wear masks, uh, for our personal protection, uh, that translates into people's apprehension to, uh, hurriedly rush back indoors and, uh, be close to one another, be under the same roof. Um, and so what we're suggesting for council this evening is a continuation of the actions that they have taken up to this point, uh, which would be, uh, restrict the outdoor dining, uh, restrictions that we have in our regular ordinance. Um, that would be allowing those people to use parking lots or, um, their own space, as well as the, uh, North Robina, North Phillips, South Griffith, South Thomas, uh, East Dorothea, right-of-ways owned by the city as well. Um, any of those are, are on the table for restaurants that are potentially interested in taking advantage of that if they find that it would better suit their restaurant or their operations to do so. Um, in addition to that, uh, this particular ordinance now, uh, with this continuation, uh, city count, or we're also, administration is asking the city council permission to study the feasibility of, uh, creating a public plaza at Griffith on the south side of 12 Mile. Uh, this is an area that has been closed now for quite a while. Uh, we've gotten high marks. Uh, people have remarked that they like the outdoor dining. They like the visibility. Uh, they like to see people utilizing the space. Our own master plan in 2007 called for a public plaza to be created downtown. Uh, it specifically said Robina. The city, as you recall, attempted that. Um, it had limited success, uh, but one of the things that we heard, uh, as part of the feedback was that it felt rushed and it didn't, um, didn't really have the public community embrace it, uh, like we would have hoped. Uh, so not, so learning from, from past, uh, feedback, we'd like, again, the opportunity to study something that could be fully embraced by the community. Uh, the city would be able to use it, uh, in any of our departments, including recreation, local community groups, our, our chamber for various events, uh, local businesses, uh, even local groups, uh, even people that have, uh, like the taste of Berkeley could potentially go there. I think that's been part of the conversation at one point. Uh, but anyway, a public gathering place that has high visibility right in our, in our downtown, our, our heaviest trafficked areas, this would be open for anyone to use. Uh, it wouldn't be dedicated to any one particular business or use all the time, so, um, again, i-if not for our master plan calling for something like this to be located downtown, I, we wouldn't be asking for, for this to even move forward. Um, but it's a culmination of various events, uh, that bring this before you this evening. So with that, uh, our, our community development director, Aaron Schluto, is, has authored the resolution, as well as the memo you find in this eve, uh, in your packet this evening, outlining what a feasibility study for a public plaza would look like, as well as, uh, his, her department is, is tasked with the administrative functionality of permitting the temporary use permits for the outdoor dining. So, uh, she is absolutely your content expert here, sir.
Director Schluto, we'll turn it over to you. Is there anything you'd like to add, uh, to give us some additional context?
Well, uh, thank you. Uh, good evening, everyone. The city manager, uh, outlined it really beautifully. Um, the one thing I wanted to focus on is, uh, the extension of this, of this, uh, relaxation of the temporary outdoor dining enclosures and stuff like that. This is the longest one we've ever asked for, and the intent of that is to make sure that we have given ourselves enough time, not only to conduct the feasibility study and see if it works there, not only with the South Griffith, but, um, on a, uh, Dorothea at Coolidge as well, but also to engage the public. We really want to make sure that we have the buy-in and the understanding, and we have the input, not only from the local businesses that are in that area, but the residents who will be impacted by this type of, uh, closure as well. There are a number of things that we, we did, and, um, we really want to make sure that we, we bring them to, to our table. We work with them. We talk with them. Is there something that they have a concern with that we didn't think about? Well, let's, let's look at that. Um, so extending this to the end of next year will really give us an opportunity to do an in-depth community engagements, engagement strategy, now that we're opening things back up and we can do face-to-face engagement. We also extended it that long to make sure and build in, uh, time so that way we don't have to come back for an extension from you. So we can, maybe we'll get this done in six months, and we can come back and say, okay, we're done. This is the recommendation, blah, blah, and then we can shorten this resolution. But the intent is to not extend it beyond this, this end date of December 31st, 2022. Additionally, it'll give us time to explore our ordinances. All of our ordinances currently right now with outdoor dining, sales and service areas is related, is regulated by special land use approval. Now, as I outlined in my review letter, uh, uh, review memo here, it's, that's a complex thing. And looking at it from a special land use perspective, when there's seven members, or, I'm sorry, nine members of the planning commission who look at it first and make a recommendation, and then, uh, city council ultimately adopts it or approves it, if we were to make that an administrative function, we really need to make sure we look at the parking and the public implications and the neighborhood impacts. And those are all things that are discussed in the public meeting, so if we were to, to look at making that more of an administrative function, we want to make sure we don't have any unintended consequences due to that. Uh, finally, the, the feasibility that I mentioned. Um, so this would really give us the opportunity to study this and, and focus and make sure that this is, uh, this is a beneficial thing for the community in this area at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, because we've had some very passionate members of our community already, uh, during our initial public comments, I'm going to open it up to the residents that are here first in person, um, to comment. We'll, uh, go then to the hi, the folks that are visiting with us, uh, via the hybrid model to, uh, talk to us as well, and then council will ultimately discuss. But I want to give everybody that's here, um, that would like to speak an opportunity to speak first. So if you're with us and you'd like to comment on, uh, the resolution in front of us, R-2721, now is the perfect time.
Want me to do it a second time?
Uh, Mr. Sapanian Bennett, uh, did speak during public comments. I, I feel like if people did not remember that... No, anybody. I mean, no, 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 anybody that's with us here. Sorry. Okay, all right.
Are you going to speak Berkeley Common regarding this?
I'd like to hear what you have to say. Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm, I'm not, I'm not from the go-to-dies meeting, so apologize for the informalness. But, um, I'm April McCrum, and my husband, Stephen, and I have been doing business in Berkeley in the corner of Griffith and 12 Mile since 2000. We love the Berkeley community and have thoroughly enjoyed growing our business here over the years. Um, we also own Yellow Door Art Market and manage four apartments above our Catching Fireflies shop. We are glad the city offered unique options for businesses to survive during these unprecedented times, and we think Berkeley Common did a great job transforming the street into an open eating area and have encouraged our guests to dine there. However, we would like to see Griffith reopen again this fall. Um, we purchased our, uh, Catching Fireflies building as a highly visible corner location with easy access at an intersection with a traffic light. Closing Griffith diminishes all these advantages and devalues our property investment, as we feel, because corner, corner, you know, property investments are just more valuable than in the line of street, you know, businesses. Um, it's an inconvenience for our team members, customers, and tenants not to have easy access to our, the lighted side street that directly borders our business. We have fielded many questions from our guests over the past year, inquiring when the street would reopen, and we expressed it was a temporary sacrifice to help fellow businesses get through crippling capacity limitations. Um, Berkeley Common also purchased a highly visible corner location with the easy access and intersection with a traffic light. Um, this purchase did not include a 2,000-square-foot outdoor patio, which is roughly the same amount of space of their entire first floor. Um, between the wide sidewalk that borders Griffith along the front of the building and 12 Mile, we feel there would have adequate space for outdoor dining options moving forward. Um, another concern is Catching Fireflies is open seven days a week, um, 10 to 6 May through Saturday, 10 to 8 on Thursdays, and 12 to 5 on Sundays. It is frustrating that the street closure is only used five evenings a week, and more recently on Saturday afternoons, and just very recently on Sunday afternoons. And let's not forget, it can't be used when the weather is not cooperative either. Um, I'm just curious, has a study ever been done with the traffic patterns on Griffith? Um, I know having a business that borders an intersection for the past 21 years, many more patrons would benefit from using that street to get through and easy access to all those stores in the area. Um, I understand a recent survey also pitched the street closure as a positive public space. Um, and that extended closure for 15 months would give them time to study this. I just think it's only reasonable for businesses and residents to know more specific actionable plans on what is going to be studied before it's passed. I mean, and, and I'm just, you know, I'm curious about the survey results, too. I know a big survey was released. I would, I would be very interested in maybe the public postings of those, um, so everybody has a better idea, where everybody, you know, falls on the, on the spectrum for their opinion on this. And, and also, for Berkeley Common, I would imagine they would want to have that space open for a while. It's not public space, because it is to their advantage, you know, having their, um, you know, patio help, help them. But, for example, like, how would this be advertised as a public space since it's been only used by a private business for the past year? Um, is Berkeley Common going to lend their whole setup for, you know, patrons to enjoy? Like, take out lunches from TLC, or cams, or cottage in during the day? Um, how about when Berkeley Common's open? Like, what percentage of, and if they keep their tables there, like, what percentage, you know, would be available for open availability? It's just, I feel there's like a lot of really unanswered questions before we just, like, sign up and let's do it, you know? up and let's do it, you know? These are just the few of the numerous questions to be addressed before a closure extension. And maybe if it's not studied as a public, you know, place, what are the ramifications of one single business benefiting from a permanent closure of a public street? That's just even a longer list of questions to be addressed. But and on a safety note, since Griffith has been closed for over a year, many vehicles that travel along the alleyway regularly has increased their speed, and we've seen them zip right by, you know, and so that is a safety concern for us where our customers across that path to enter or return from our shop and as well as tenants who park directly behind our Catching Fireflies building. And also louder sounds coming from the outdoor eating area on a special themed music nights from or from busier weekend crowds, you know, are definitely a concern for our tenants and future tenants if Griffith was to be permanently closed as we did not purchase the building next to a bustling, you know, outdoor evening crowd. So thank you for listening to my concerns and considering my business because my building is by far the most impacted by the street closure. I do have copies of my notes. If you have any interest of having them, I'm happy to pass them out. If not, that's fine, too.
Thank you, April. And I appreciate the email. Please. As we move through these these comments here, I do have a request. I do not want this to get into various namings of businesses and back and forths between anybody that is here. So I ask for your comments about your own personal perspective, please, and not any putting onto the other businesses that may be involved in this, just because I just don't want to get into a spot where people feel like they have to then respond to everything or respond to something and put anybody in an awkward spot in a public meeting when we want to support all of our businesses here in the community and certainly don't want to put pit anybody against each other. So I just want to make that clear, and I ask that in all of your comments, kind of, if you can take that in consideration, I would be very appreciative. Cindy, looks like you're coming up. Come on.
Cindy Kuhn, owner of The Lunch Cafe. First, I want to thank our city and our council for making things, you've been very accommodating. We had asked because the my building in particular went through a sale during the middle of this pandemic, and so there was a there's a new owner and they have a lot of employees and my poor staff, myself, my old body, running around in the back parking lot because we had carryouts. We worked through this entire pandemic only because of staff shortage have we had to cut our Saturday hours because I think my staff would kill me if I made them work Saturday. But I do want to thank you for that. It is because you've been very accommodating and you have suggested, oh, well, you can do this. You can close the street. You can put tables out in front and absolutely we can. Okay, I don't have the accessibility of having to block off the back parking lot. I don't have, I didn't hear in the reading of this, you know, the north side of Griffith that we can, you know, put tables out there or anything else. I do have a wider portion of my sidewalk and I can use, I have two tables out there. I need more, I guess. And we all, not naming any, we all business owners have had to recreate. You either recreate or you lock your doors. And that's how it was. And it's, no, I know that COVID is not over, Mr. Henon. I do realize that firsthand. I'm just responding to that. But we're moving forward. We can't look back. We're moving forward and moving forward. I love what Common has done. I think it is great. I 150% support any parklot, any any area in the city that will bring people downtown, better our business structure, do any of that. I think it is awesome. I think it is great. It definitely, it's needed for sure. I know that the master plan states Robina. I would love, I have had many customers who have said, oh, could I take on the nice days? Because yes, people want to eat outside. Can I take my lunch and can I go across the street? I'm sorry, you can't. You know, that's that's not ours. Okay, it's not open, it's not open to the public. So I guess what I'm saying for our cafe is that if we can have an open area and make it usable to everyone, if you get a coffee down at the the other place that's down the street from, and you want to go read a book, I mean, whatever, it's to make it not for one particular business. You know, I love you guys dearly as business owners and a restaurateur, and it's, it is, this is not directed to, it's just, let's make it, let's, let's be a family. Let's put it all together and not push people out. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I own Vitrine. I'm not on 12 Mile. I do not own a restaurant. The first time I saw this space.
Say your name and city of residence for the record.
My name is Susan Rogel. Sorry. The first time I saw this space, we were doing an interview for Ladies Night Out a long time ago. I had a business in Ann Arbor for years. The second I laid eyes on it, I said, we need this permanently. It's dynamic. It makes us competitive. It's an outdoor space. We should need more than one, not just one. I saw it as such a forward-thinking space, not in answer to the COVID. The COVID has taught us a lot, and this is one of the many things it's taught us, that this is engaging and it's compelling and it's makes the city very dynamic and instead of driving right through, you're stopping and enjoying it. I loved this space the second I saw it. I think we could do more, you know, with it, who's using it and all those things, are there all those moving parts? I think it affects the city as a whole. It makes us extremely competitive, and I can't say enough about keeping this space and adding more, doing more, not less. Figuring out what our dear friends and peers and these hard-working, well-meaning people find wrong with it and reacting if it's a speed issue, how do other towns that have done this well, you know, react to slowing people down? If it's something about, you know, the time it is and the noise, I will tell you, in Ann Arbor, that noise just makes it hip and happening and people really love that. You know what I mean? It's, it gets people out. But so reacting to rather than fight or flight, you know, finding out what's wrong with it and fixing it and not only having just one, but more than one. So just heard it was on the ballot and I thought I'd come and share.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Sapanian Bennett, I do not want to make you feel like you can't come back up again if you wanted to comment again.
Yes, no.
If you would like to. We're on, it's the right time.
Again, I will double down on what our friend from Vitrine said. A lot of families in the neighborhood directly behind get a kick out of coming down there. So I'm not just representing my personal opinion. I said I would come on behalf of a lot of the neighbors in the community. Obviously, there's differing opinions on different things, but I am coming in support of this specific extension while we do our due diligence to find, do our research, do what we're supposed to. But again, we hope to extend these types of things, be progressive, not be afraid to be left behind. Let's make Berkeley unique and cool and a place where people want to move into and continue to deepen our city.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Kutcher, owner, one of the three owners of Berkeley Common, and I'm here to speak about the extension tonight as well as I didn't really realize the other piece of this was on the agenda today. I thought we were just talking about the extension, not making this a permanent fixture right now. But I will touch on both subjects. I first and foremost want to thank council for being progressive, saying yes when you could have said no. It kept us in business. This has been a challenging year for all my retailers and restaurants and personally, mentally, everybody here sitting here together. We are an inclusive business, always have been, always will. We invested here for many reasons because we are a community business. Never did I want anybody not to have lunch in our space. Actually, if anybody asks us, I say hop the fence, and I will continue to do so. That going forward, outdoor dining is imperative for restaurants right now. We are not moving the COVID button forward. It's going to a different place, a different phase. We are masked up as of tomorrow again. We are not using our indoor private dining event room because of COVID. It is just too dangerous. We are operating an outdoor dining room right now, and I don't think it's a bad thing, and I'm not ashamed of it, and I think it's only brought business to the city. Every time somebody comes in and they can't get in, whether it's restrictions or anything like that, we tell them to go shopping and discover Berkeley. And the feedback has, I have never gone to this store before and we're coming back. So I hope that continues. The other big part of this is the relationships and partnerships we're developing with the other businesses in town. We're sharing ideas, we're inviting progress together, and we're promoting a thriving downtown, something that would be a shame to squash. It is COVID has opened Pandora's box. The community support behind this project has been overwhelming positive. Can it be tweaked? Absolutely. Do we want to tweak it with you? 100%. Do we want this a community space? 100%. It has never been our idea just to benefit financially from this space to be our own. We serve on boards, my sister and I. We live, breathe, eat Berkeley, and that's why we're here. We want to see other things like this exist. Is this number one initiative? Possibly. Could there be others? I hope so, and we'll work very hard for that. Why we realize this is not everybody's shared vision. We're asking for extension on these areas tonight, and we invite an open discussion for anything more permanently in the future. This is just one step of many. So this doesn't have to be definite or permanent or has to be so negative. We want to continue to be a good business in this area. We want to be good neighbors to all of our businesses. And time is of the essence, so we ask you to approve this tonight for just the extension. The bigger discussion can exist at a later date. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I am Chris Gross, one of the three partners at Berkeley Common. My sister spoke to most of the things I wanted to say. I guess I just wanted to add that first, again, I'll echo our appreciation, our business was saved by having this outdoor space. And second, it's been our intention and it will continue to be to to work as a team in Berkeley. And the way we live and the way we run our business, I think, are the same. We want to project positivity and inclusion. We want to invite people in. Having this outdoor space and this visibility has brought people from outside Berkeley. I have all of the data because I have a system now to track that, and there are people coming from 45 minutes away to dine outdoors because we had that available last winter when not many people did. And I don't know if it'll be true, but it very well might be true that this winter is the same thing. People will still want to eat outside, and we are aiming to provide that. And I've heard some of the concerns tonight, and I'm sorry, I haven't heard those before. But I think if we approve, it's the whole reason to approve this extension is to be able to hear those concerns and address them. We want to be good partners. We want to be good neighbors, and that's why we volunteer here, work here, live here. We're all in, and we are happy to partner up in any way and move forward as a city and bring people here. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening. Mike McGinnis, interim executive director for Berkeley's Downtown Development Authority. And to the esteemed, honorable, local elected officials and public servants, thank you for your leadership. I wanted to, you know, you do the your honor thing, so I just want to lay it on thick. On behalf of the entire mile stretch of 12 Mile and the entire mile stretch of Coolidge that falls within the Downtown District Authority footprint, I want to encourage for the sake of allowing downtown Berkeley to have that competitive advantage regionally speaking and to not lose that. I would hate for the multiple restaurants to have that competitive disadvantage if it were to expire or lapse in just a matter of weeks. So I think that this has been a very instructive and helpful deliberation this evening, and that can continue beyond this evening and beyond this chamber where we can make it as maximum benefit for all entities, not solely restaurants. And I look forward to the DDA being at that table and being a part of those conversations to make any decision with temporary or long-term, to make it the best bang for the buck and the best residual impact for our downtown and residents. I think the empirical and anecdotal evidence speaks to this temporary measure benefiting both the community overall, but specifically our downtown corridors with that extension. And so I just wanted to offer that perspective from what's been shared through the DDA to you this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Dan McCourt at 3063 12 Mile, just a couple buildings down from the Griffith that we're discussing. But Derek got out of here tonight before I got a chance to give him some major props on DPW's handling of the incredibly disgusting dumpster situation that we've got going on in the back of that parking lot. Tried for years and years and years, and the only reason I bring it up tonight is because many of us here tonight are part of that guilty party, and I just want to, now that we've got everybody in the same room, that we all get on the same page, it's literally a rat, not even a rat trap, it's a rat haven. It got to the point where there was several inches of rotting garbage along below the dumpsters themselves. There's three dumpsters in there. We talked about maybe removing the brown one, hopefully leaving more room. We can't keep people from dumping, you know, old restaurant supplies and things like that in the middle of the night, but we can put our own garbage in our own bags, put those bags into the dumpster the way that it's supposed to happen. Derek has been instrumental in his feedback and then getting that place cleaned out just this last week. But I challenge everybody that has a business here that uses that dumpster to take your own garbage out on once in a while, pick up the stuff with your address on it and put it in the dumpster. That said, in talking about the outdoor dining and the space that we're looking at, I've eaten everywhere. As you can tell, this doesn't happen by mistake. Wonderful restaurants, love Berkeley, live just a mile away, and I'm all for eating outside. I like eating. I like eating outside. I wasn't super aware of the understanding as to what this meant. I was thinking that this would be an open space where someone could get something from a restaurant, cocktail and some dinner and walk over to the space and enjoy that space. That, to me, seems like a city space that would be something that during the COVID, this was a great idea at the time. It was the right idea at the time. My concern is two things. First of all, safety. Right now, are the outdoor spaces being observed with inspections like our buildings? Do they get looked at? There, right now, there are extension cords running through puddles. There are various things that would not pass if inspectors came into my building. So safety first, right? We want to make sure that everybody is safe in doing this and enjoying themselves while dining outdoors. And the second is inclusion. You know, to me, if it's a city space, if it's a city street, if you guys are going to make this decision, and I don't envy your decision tonight, the street, I can see maybe a sidewalk, being able to encompass that as your own. City street, not so much. If it's going to be a city street like that, it should be open. We shouldn't have to hop a fence to enjoy something on a city street that we all pay taxes for. So we pay taxes based on the square footage of our building. That's where we should own our business if we want to have the ability to do this. We did this during COVID. It was great, but I urge you to reconsider and not extend the outdoor dining for the end of Griffith, anyway. If you're looking for an option moving forward, my building will be available. You can raise that, create a nice green space and not have to worry about a street. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. We're not raising your building, though. Sorry. Thank you. We're not raising your building, though. Sorry. Any additional comments from folks that are here before I go to our folks that are with us virtually?
Can I have some clarification? What Erin presented, okay, what you're voting on is the continued closure of Griffith Avenue, south of 12 Mile, for only Berkeley?
No, no, no. We're voting on the temporary restrictions that are in multiple places right now that anybody has access to. That happens to be one of those locations, Griffith, that is under this ordinance or this resolution right now. That's why it's come up. It's not really what the conversation is about. It's a part of it. The conversation's about extending the restrictions.
Extending for all businesses across Berkeley?
Under the ordinance, correct. Under the resolution, yes.
Okay.
So, look, we will, we will, Council has a lot of questions, and I think it's going to clarify a lot of what you are asking right now. Again, I want to give everybody an opportunity to comment first, based on the feedback that we've heard, and then we will obviously deliberate, and we have certainly questions of our own that I think are going to go a long way to help me to maybe clarify some of the questions that have come up recently. Is that fair? If not, you can come back up. Don't worry. I'm not going to say you can't come up anymore. I wasn't going to let you do it right now, though, Cindy. I'm just kidding.
Well, when she said about the traffic going through the alleyway and stuff, I do know, because I am a resident of the city, the traffic on Beverly, people know that Griffith is closed, and it is a four-way stop. No, it's not. It's not. People blow that stop sign multiple times a day, night, doesn't matter. So that's a concern for me. There's been accidents there. I know that.
I appreciate that feedback, Cindy. That's not something that necessarily we hear about all the time, but I can promise you that we do know a department there across the street that would love to monitor that area if it does infect what's happening, what you mentioned. Okay. Ms. Mathis, let's go to the folks that are with us virtually here so we can allow them to get their comments on. I know we had one already. He's certainly welcome to come back again.
Sam, you're welcome to speak.
Yep. Yeah, I think, you know, although I said it at the wrong time because I thought I was late, so I'm not going to repeat myself. I think we've been yapping long enough. Just, that's it. Thank you for the opportunity.
Certainly. Ms. Mathis, who else? Who's next?
There is no one else at this time.
All right. So Mr. Baumgarten and Director Schluto, I'm going to throw it back over to you just for a minute. We're going to, again, clarify exactly what we're doing today, what this ordinance, R-27 and R-28, I believe. I think it's R-28 right after. Yes, okay. What those ordinances do and why it seems that we're having two conversations at once here.
Okay. Yes, I'd be happy to address. So the resolution before you this evening is a continuation of the resolution that has been in effect since June of last year with the inclusion of the temporary enclosures which we brought about, I want to say October, November of 2020, for the winter months. So really, the context of the feasibility study was just to give context of why we're going this late, but it is an extension of the resolution that would allow outdoor dining in private parking areas where special land use approval has not been granted yet, in municipal parking areas, on the residential side streets where, and the four of them are listed in the ordinance, but it's South Griffith, North, sorry, apologize, North Robina at 12 Mile, North Phillips at 12 Mile, South Griffith at 12 Mile, South Thomas at 12 Mile, and East Orthia at Coolidge. Now, we put these in the resolution after careful consideration with the city manager, as well as with the former DDA director, and those were the areas that we thought might be more utilized because there's a congregation of either restaurants or a large swath of retail businesses that could use it for their outdoor sales or service areas. So it wasn't just intended for this one, this one location. However, this one location is the only one that has been utilized. We haven't received any real interest from any of the other ones. Now, if someone were interested and wanted to pursue that, by all means, we're more than happy to look at this, or if there's another intersection that might work, we can talk about that as well. There has been some interest at East Orthia at Coolidge, but it just never kind of came to fruition. So the resolution before you is just that extension to allow that which has been happening for the past year to continue. And like I said, we put the, as we've gone along, we've put an end date on them. Sometimes it was for six months, sometimes it was for three months. This one is the longest one, only in the sense that hopefully by the end of 2022, most of or all restrictions will be over and done with, and we'll be into a new phase, but also to really look at this space and see if that's something that we would want to do, East Cool, or the Coolidge space, Griffith. But the resolution before you is just to extend that which is already in place.
Right. We are not voting on potentially Griffith permanently closing. That is not what we are talking about today. We do want to study, which is what Director Schluto mentioned, give us some time to actually study if that would make sense as a public plaza. But this is not a vote on up or down on Griffith. That is not what we're trying to accomplish today. We're trying to, we're discussing potentially using those restrictions that Director mentioned that apply to various places in the community. A number of different businesses are taking advantage of some of the relaxed guidelines right now where normally a special land use would have been the typical process to try to make it easier for folks to continue operating, especially not knowing when this COVID is going to allow us to resume eating inside comfortably in close quarters with some other folks. That is the primary concern. I did not want this to get into a specifically Griffith conversation, although I also am not stifling anybody's comments or communication because I think it is important, especially as we do talk about this in the future, and what is a public plaza there? What does that public plaza look like? How would folks have access to it? I guess I kind of, in speaking with the city manager earlier, we kind of envision it maybe something similar to what we have for a park right now. If somebody wants to run out of park for something, they could sign up. We have, you know, sign up at some point, and there are probably some fees associated with renting for a small time period, that space. But it would also just be open city space. So if somebody does grab some food somewhere and wants to go and eat, they could certainly do that at any time. But again, that's a further down the road kind of conversation. Is that fair? Clear-ish, maybe? Council, I'm going to open it up to us because I know there are a lot of questions as well that we have, and I want to give everybody the opportunity to discuss those right now. Councilmember Price.
Yes. Director Schluto, I wanted to thank you and your team for all of the information around this proposed extension. I wanted you to speak, too, if you could, a little bit about the survey that you put out to area residents and how they felt like they've been impacted by this closure so far.
Yes, that's a great question. Thank you. So let me go back in time just a little bit. So when we were going to do the first, the first closure and the first temporary relaxation of our ordinances for outdoor dining, we did put out one survey, and it was for those business property owners that were on Griffith, one block south of that intersection, so it just went down to Beverly, and then east and west of Griffith. So it was a very small survey pool. Now, overwhelmingly, the people liked it, blah, blah. This time, given that we are looking at the possible, well, first of all, I wanted to ask how things have been impacting them in the past year. Would they like this to continue? Would they like it to be a public plaza? We opened it a little bit more broadly. And so that area went out much broader. So we went one block north of 12 Mile, two blocks south of, no, I'm sorry, two blocks north of 12 Mile, two blocks south of 12 Mile, and then Gardner to Robina. So we had a much larger swath of residents who could participate. Mailed it out to 448 business owners, property owners, residents, occupants, et cetera, and we received 365 responses in that survey. So overwhelmingly, we had people say that they've reacted, felt very positively about the closure over the past year. 49.86%, 182 responses felt that the Griffith closure has impacted them very positively. There were about 10 questions here. We were trying to keep it as broad as possible. Again, this was just the first of many community engagement efforts. And if this had skewed wildly the other way, we would be having a different conversation right now. But we had a lot of people say that they would be interested in discussing how this could be extended, either seasonally or permanently. Most people that responded did not want to see it return to the former configuration of the two-way stop immediately. They, the numbers kind of speak from, sorry, yes.
Oh, I just, could you clarify, you said 49% said it impacted them very positively. What were the other options?
Very negatively, negatively, neutral, hadn't really noticed, positively or very positively. So it was on a scale of one, yeah.
Okay, so it wasn't just very positively or negatively. Just wanted to clarify that.
Right. We tried to, yeah, tried to give them a little bit more.
And then you said 49%, very positively, and then how many about positively, neutral?
Yeah, positively was 11.51%, so about 42 people. Neutral, 25.48%, 93 people. Negatively, 4.93%, 18 persons. Very negatively, 8.22%, which is about 30 persons.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. Okay.
So in addition to some of these questions of, you know, would you like to see it as a temporary, seasonal, and/or permanent, like I said, things were very positive. We even included a question of how many times you've visited Berkeley Common in the last year, just to kind of get a gauge of the people who did respond. Were they frequent visitors here or not, just to give a little bit more context? And then we did open it up for any additional thoughts, comments, concerns, questions, or anything. And the number of responses we've received was well over 240. Not to mention, we also noted that if you wanted to include your email address on this to receive updates, excuse me, please do so, and we'll make sure to keep you updated on how things progress in the future. And this will be a really good email blast list for when we start doing the community engagement component of this, if we continue moving forward. So this has been a really good gauge as to how people have been feeling over the past year and also where they want to go in the future.
That's fantastic. Thank you for being proactive with communicating with the residents before we have to make this decision.
Additional comments? Still looking this way, so I'll stay over here in case there are any. If not, I'll turn the other way. Okay, all right, I guess I'll come over to this side. Councilmember Hannon.
Yeah, and just to do some summation there, that was 86% of people felt were neutral or some form of positive with the change, with a pretty large sample size. So, I mean, that number speaks a lot to me. So I do support the extension. I have two modifications that I want to see. And the first is, I do think we need to be charging rent at this point. This is any place that we have, not just Griffith, any place we have private use of public property. We're past the acute phase of COVID, and there's, but there are still issues. And so I do think that it does, let's say, even the playing field if we start to charge rent. And the second place, second item, is where we do publicly close, close public roads. I do think we should carve out a part that is clearly public access, that anyone can use. It's clearly marked as such, so we can start to see the public plaza aspect of it. So we're experimenting, you know, we're getting data on experimentation on that part as well, you know, while we have these other things. So those are the two things that I'd like to see added to this.
Anything over here? No, okay. Any other comments as we make our way back here?
Mr. May I address that second point?
Certainly, yes.
So, yeah, the part of the community engagement strategy and the reason for this extension is to really look at the programming of that space. So if we were to look at that area as a public plaza, how can we ensure that this is done correctly, that brings everybody here, that they now know that this has transitioned from that which it was to what it will be in the future, and making sure that that is done where there's not any ambiguity in it whatsoever? So while it's still be a place where people could, you know, go get a sandwich and come over here, making sure that they understand that there's a clear demarcation from a private use to a public use. And that'll all be part of the feasibility study, the design of it, the programming of it. These were things that we noted that weren't done at the Robina Plaza, and that's why, maybe reasons why it didn't flourish, is we want to make sure that we correct those mistakes if we do this going forward.
Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for this information, for bringing this back to us. And I want to thank everybody for their comments and thoughts tonight. I know this specifically before us now is just the extension, but it's easy to get into the dialogue about the broader what-ifs and could-be's, especially into your point about the Robina issue. Some of the comments we've received here in the short term, looking at the barricades and everything, it feels like a disaster zone if you're going by there. And there's all sorts of great safety reasons why we have those barriers and all the kind of protective things because folks, you know, if they haven't been in town a while, they might just hit the turn signal and try to pop in there. So not to get into the closure conversation, but just to help paint the picture, if any of these properties or other spots were eventually deemed to be closed, it would actually be closed at the street. You'd have like on-street parking, so it would just be an extension of whether it's Coolidge or 12 Mile, and it would be, there would be no way to turn in because it would actually be sealed off, and it would actually just continue the street. There'd be additional parking. We'd gain parking in those kind of scenarios. And then to your point, there'd be proper signage. We'd amend the wayfinding that's been put in place to indicate that this is a public facility. And then to the comment that was made earlier, it would just be rented out as needed for specific events, just like you could rent out J.C. Park or anything like that now. Now, back to the temporary extension, a lot of it does hinge first on the COVID, right? Because COVID is right in the middle of this title even of what we're doing here. So certainly, since the Delta thing is going crazy right now, I think we need to keep that bigger picture in mind. And I'm glad that we were reminded again that this is more than just one intersection. And secondly, the notion of, so I'm going to come back to you with the timing question again. When do we imagine these additional conversations and studies continuing? And I, like my colleague, I applaud the proactive work that's already been done with the studies that have been put in place. Can you describe, not even to pin you down to specific dates or anything, but the general sequence or the kinds of conversations that we'll have to get a better feel for how this space could be used to benefit the entire community?
So I've started unofficially putting out some feelers with a couple of planning firms that I know, just to get an idea of what a feasibility study would cost for those two spaces that I mentioned, have started to brainstorm a little bit with our communications guru, Ms. Tori Mathis, on ways that we can bring people together and talk about it. As you know, we had a really robust community engagement strategy planned for our master plan, which didn't come to fruition. So now maybe we can use some of those ideas to do this, but it would involve meetings with the residents. It would involve meetings with the business owners because their concerns and their viewpoints are very, very different. So we need to make sure that we've looked at everything secularly, but then, you know, comprehensively together. So those are the kinds of things we want to do. The survey was a good start, and I imagine we'll probably do another one of those because it gives people the opportunity to do it from the comfort of their own home. They don't have to leave. They don't have to go out, and they can also maybe be a little bit more honest about what they're feeling rather than a face-to-face conversation. But certainly, this is not the only, like I said, it's not the only way we're going to be doing this. There's going to be a lot more face-to-face conversations. Once we get into a little bit more of the what would you like to see component, design component, and if we have a conceptual, then, and I'm just brainstorming here. But, you know, then there's opportunities for bringing people into that space and showing them renderings and say, which one do you like better? Do you like this better? What about this? And really making it so that the community is more or less designing this. They're helping us design and telling us what they want to see. So that's really kind of where I, my thought process is coming from on that.
Great, thank you. That makes a lot of sense. And I'll just wrap up my bit here again to kind of reinforce some of the comments that we heard from folks to ensure that the here and now is safe. Certainly, we don't want to, you know, trip hazards. And I, too, you guys know I'm a big fan of speed limits, right? There's a reason we have those things, and they are important, and stop signs even more so. So whatever, so this is my request, whatever we can do to ask our friends across the street to help keep an eye on that and find some ways to instrument that, just to let folks know that it's not a thoroughfare, right? It's meant to, stop signs are there for all the right reasons, and we want to make sure people stay safe and obey those, so. So thanks again for folks for bringing those up to our attention so we can address those.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to say that I think that what Berkeley Commons has done has been very good for the city. It brought us a lot of business, both for the restaurant and for the retail. I think it's a good thing. I think we need to move forward. I think our feasibility... I think it's a good thing, I think we need to move forward, I think a feasibility study would be a good thing. There is one other thing that we have thrown out feelers about but not had any response, and that are social districts. Royal Oak is instituted social districts, and that's something that we could think about, but we need businesses to come to us with some ideas to help out. So, if some of the businesses think that they have a good case or a good idea on what we could do to implement a social district in addition to what we're doing now, that could be an improvement. So, I think that the feasibility study is good, we need to get more public access space, but what Berkeley Commons is doing right now, I think is helping us out a lot in getting people into the city and getting them through there safely. So, thank you for what you've done, and let's think about the other part of it as a social district maybe later on if we can find a way to do that successfully in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron, I could read this, or you can read it, either way, I just, again, trying to keep this on the resolution that we're talking about. I know there's a larger thing that continues to come up, potentially for the future in our community, but again, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, plus the five that you mentioned. There are a number of different things that this resolution continues to provide, you know, allowing the use of private parking spaces, you know, up to 50% of their current lawful usable space, or by 30% of the existing parking area, temporarily adding or expanding outdoor dining or seating sales and service areas, not encroaching or obstructing fire lanes, you know, obviously being respectful of the noise, and then if there's a municipal lot, you know, up to 25% of municipal parking area may be used available. There are a number of other businesses that are taking advantage of these things and have been taking advantage of them. The conversation today has seemed to center around just one particular instance, but there are far more that we are talking about. In speaking with colleagues in other communities, especially after the past year, outdoor dining, outdoor dining access, I don't see that going away, even if, hopefully soon, COVID is something that is behind us, I don't see a need or a desire for outdoor dining to just vanish. That's not happening. Actually, we're seeing a number of communities close to us going in the opposite direction, which is something that I think we need to certainly be available and open to as well, because that's what people want, and that's what businesses are going to need to be able to offer to continue to be competitive, is to have some of those spaces. To me, that is the most important part of continuing the temporary ease of these restrictions today, that is what is most important for me. The Griffith opportunity, I think, as a public space and a public plaza, and maybe its own little social district, where, you know, anybody who's out and about can enjoy that spot, certainly, private businesses can also enjoy that spot, or rent it out by permitting, or however, we're going to figure that out if we decide to go that way in the future permanently, those are going to be ongoing conversations. But, under this, that intersection is one of the five where anybody else, again, could have applied and hadn't yet to utilize one of those spaces, that would be able to continue. Now, my question for you, Ms. Schluto, is if we do approve this, and it's continued up through December of 2022, when does it become our public plaza for us to program and try out and really study and feasibility and all of those things versus where it's kind of seen right now as it's only for one particular space?
Well, a lot of that comes down to, once the feasibility study is done, and we've engaged the public, and if there's buy-in, we'll bring those results and we'll bring all that feedback back to you and how we want to do this. It wouldn't be a start and stop on a Saturday, and then this is now a public plaza, there would be a transitional component, I'm assuming, having quite gotten that far as to how to rule that out, but there would be a point of, the use can continue as a private outdoor dining space until this day, and then the programming and the plaza would be ready to go, you know, shortly thereafter. But, leading them up so that way the business can acclimates, can get their last, the last hurrah, I guess you want to call it, so that way they can make their arrangements on all of the investments they've done on their side.
All right, so then I have a legal question for the attorney. If that is the case, and the resolution as written, I mean, it just says you can apply at this space, and now it basically says this through December of 2022, do we have to add any language in here to, you know, be again as transparent as possible with everybody involved, and not to just call one day and say, hey, you were on, let's use somebody else, you were at East Orthea and Coolidge, well, guess what? We're taking this over now, and they say, no, you approved this to December of 2022, you don't have any access to it. Would we have to change the language or put anything in here to give us that ability other than we take the resolution out?
I think you already have, I mean, they're right further down in that resolution, it says, it is further resolved that the City Council reserves the authority to modify, shorten, or lengthen the duration terms and conditions of this resolution, as the Council deems reasonable and appropriate under the circumstances. That is something we've carried over from the prior resolutions, recognizing that facts and circumstances do change, and the Council is making this as a temporary accommodation, but as we become more informed, as I said, circumstances change, Council wants that, to have that ability to either backtrack or move in a different direction. So, it's a long answer to your simple question.
I just feel like we seem to have found ourselves in a lot of places where there's some gray area, let's say, and we end up having people in robes having to tell us.
I can't say that people, I can't say people won't either applaud or complain if Council goes in a different direction, but you are reserving the authority to do that.
And that is a very general question, it's certainly not, it was directed at the people at East Orthea and Coolidge, first of all, just to make sure that if something changed, because my goal is to make that a public plaza, as soon as expediently, as soon as possible and feasibly possible, given what we want to have, just because I think it would be such a good benefit for the entire community, and then look at potential other places, back to Orthea again. That's my goal. Yes, I am in favor of expending these restrictions, or easing of these restrictions right now for everybody else, especially with what's going on and Delta coming back and hitting in more waves, but also keeping our eye on what the future could look like, and at least having a timeline. I'm not big on approving things there with a lot of ambiguity, because if we don't know when the next steps are happening, I feel like that's what can create a lot of consternation and anger and questions in our community, and I don't want that to happen here. Does that make sense? Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Just to kind of build on that and kind of get right back to just kind of the obvious point that I think we drive pie often, and you've pointed out here, if someone at one of these other locations or somewhere else in the city was interested in taking advantage of this and leveraging it to bolster their business, especially as we get into this thing, at risk of just being completely obvious about it, what would, how would they go about contacting you, and what would you ask of them to bring in terms of, like, if they did want to do the, you know, something on Coolidge or something like that, how would they get ahold of you, and what kind of materials might you suggest that they bring? Again, just to kind of ensure that we're broadening the conversation here tonight.
Yeah, certainly. So, you can call me here at City Hall, 248-658-3329. You can email me, but we have an application, a permit application, available online, it's for the temporary outdoor dining closures, and it very specifically says where you're looking to do your outdoor dining sales service areas, whether it's on a sidewalk cafe, whether it's in a municipal private lot, or if it's on one of those intersections. You know, we haven't had any one except for this one here, but, you know, we would need a site plan showing exactly where everything is going to be, what type of barricades you're going to do, we have to work with the Road Commission of Oakland County, if it's on 12 Mile, because it's a county road, work with them, and get a traffic control order from the Department of Public Safety. So, there are a number of things that need to go into it, but certainly, if anyone is interested, take a look at our website for the application, and feel free to reach out to me at City Hall and my email address, and we can walk through all the steps.
Thank you. And just to kind of put folks' minds at ease, when you mentioned a lot of very important requirements there that are all completely valid and understandable, it almost sounds arduous, is it actually as daunting as it sounds, or like when you say site plan, could they just come in with like a sketch and a kind of a thing, or does it have to be an official?
No, it doesn't have to be signed and sealed by an architect or anything, but just showing where the building is, where the spaces are, what type of barricades you're planning on using to separate, especially if it's on the, one of these residential streets, we want to make sure that there is a clear and very identifiable blockade from the traffic area to the pedestrian area and where the patrons will be sitting. So, we want to make sure that that is very, very clear for everybody, so making sure that that is understood. And there, last year, there were a couple of people who submitted this, and it was like, no, that doesn't quite work, that's not safe enough, we, you know, try doing this over here, oh, yeah, sure, we'll do that, we'll use those materials, cool, no problem. But just making sure that something is safe and not just having a velvet rope across it wasn't, you know, didn't, wasn't enough. So, we want to make sure that there is something that is very clear and not permanent, but a little bit more permanent than a velvet rope, right?
Great.
So, yeah, any of those questions can be directed to me, and we can walk through all of those steps together. Certainly, if it's a private parking area, or municipal parking area, or sidewalk, those are a little bit easier to do, when you get into the side streets with the traffic control orders and RCOC and all the signage that needs to be done, there's a lot more to it. So, I would encourage anyone who's interested to contact me, and we can walk through all those steps together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron, you mentioned the programming component. Do you envision that happening during that feasibility study period if we approve this extending the closure? Do you envision that programming being part of that timeframe?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
You know, we would be working with Parks and Rec, we'd be working with the DDA, we'd be working with the school district, we'd be working with any other local organizations to make sure that really this is programmed within an inch of its life, to make sure that we have a lot of engaging activities and things to bring the public to this space, so that way they do know that it is a public, a public area. That's a big component to make sure it's done, and the maintenance and the routine cleaning and all that stuff, that goes in hand in hand with all of this.
Perfect, because that really was, I think, a ball drop, if you will, on Robina. I think that, to your point earlier, that those things weren't as robust as they could have been, so I'm glad to hear that that's the thinking now, so thank you.
Councilmember Hennan?
Before we approve tonight, I would just like to get the pulse of the rest of Council, if, you know, if we approve tonight, is there interest at the next meeting considering modifications that require rent, and considering some clearly identifiable public space where we have these closures?
I think first I want to ask Director Schluto, how long would it take for us to, I mean, I assume on the rent or fee structure, we probably would default to what we are using maybe in some other places in the city, but in terms of the additional steps, granted we don't have another meeting for a little while, is that enough time to come back and talk a little bit more about what this next step, what the next phases are going to look like?
In terms of the timeline of the overall, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
I mean, is that okay with Council to come back and want to take a quick, yes? Would we do that?
I apologize, but you're still looking to approve this extension this evening, and then just, okay, just wanted some clarification on my end, yes.
Yes, we're looking to make sure that we have some next steps, and we know what those next steps are potentially going to look like so that we can continue these conversations as it relates to the other item that is not, that's a part of what we're talking about right now, yes, and not the sole point of what we're talking about right now.
You will be annoyed by how many emails you are going to get from me on timelines and materials and things to go over, so.
It is okay. Any other comments from Council? Final thoughts from folks that are with us today before we vote?
Okay. It is a gray area. The master plan states Robina. Would it be more feasible, and just a suggestion, I don't know, just me sitting here thinking, the closure is already to September 30th, correct? For Berkeley Common?
Well, again, it's under the resolution for everything, yes.
Okay. Would it be clearer to open that back up, take this feasibility study, take it and do the study and the survey and everything else on Robina? Start with, that makes it a public area. You're not affecting tenants in the upstairs that April owns, okay? You're not, because there's no tenants there, I know that. I, it's just a thought.
So, either way, if this gets approved, that is a part of it, obviously, because that's one of the areas that was identified and one of the places where somebody applied and used, and we have North Robina at 12 Mile, which had not been, it was one of the areas that was targeted as a good potential for this, nobody took advantage of that yet. So, for us to, either way, if this gets approved, that is allowed to continue regardless while we're studying the feasibility, so we wouldn't be closing one down to move one either, because that's already an area that they could be permitted by this. So, you're talking about then shifting what we have in here. I'm personally not going to recommend that we shift it now just because this is how it's been, and they've used it at this point. Had it not been one of the initial places, I think that's a different conversation, maybe we would have had that before, but I think we're kind of here now. I'm personally willing to change that. Any other comments?
I would just like to follow up, I mean, it's just, the only reason why Griffith is not considered to be a public space is because Berkeley Common is only one that, you know, one of the main restaurants that chose to take advantage of that, which I think is great, I think they did a great job. I mean, I don't know if a public space is awesome for them either, because you're going to lose your dining, I mean, part of the, I mean, I will say privatized, you know, gusto goes a long way, and they are clear, you know, they're clearly showing that, because they do have a dynamic situation. I almost rather, personally, I would rather have them have a robust, awesome restaurant open for lunch, you know, lunches Saturdays and Sundays as opposed to public space, personally, I mean, as a fellow business. Oh, no, 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 I'm saying like, long-term, instead of a public space that's used periodically here and there, the loitering, and I mean, I know, I don't want to be negative, but I'm just like, I'm looking through my eyes at my manager, and I can hear it already as I say that, I would rather have a robust, you know, restaurant that's open, you know, six days a week for lunches, I mean, personally, I'm just saying.
I.
Correct.
Well, right, oh, yeah, I know.
I'm saying long-term, I guess, I would rather have, I mean.
Well, the reality is.
I mean, if you guys are going to close it regardless, I would rather have these guys buy it and do what they do, because they do a great job, I mean, if it's going to be closed, that's just my opinion.
Okay, it is a public road, I mean, that's the issue is that we can't.
You guys can sell stuff, I don't know, you guys make things happen, right? I don't know, rent things. I'm just saying, preferably, if it's going to be closed regardless, I would rather have these guys do what they're doing, because I would like it for that more so than just a, you know, public space, but that's my two cents.
All right, thank you, April, appreciate that. Any final comments before I call for the vote? Mike? And then Ms. Mathis, I'm going to be coming to you, so if anybody is in the queue, please, we'll get them ready.
I just want to say thank you to the Berkeley residents who have been so resoundingly supportive of the small businesses in our downtown footprint. I know that's true beyond just the downtown borders, but centering that in this conversation as this is a temporary measure that will be temporarily extended a little bit longer, I want to thank the residents, because we're going to need you even more so to continue that local support. I think that's distinctly true for Berkeley, even more than other communities, that's already been palpable, and I just want to celebrate that and thank the community's leaders, because our downtown businesses and the entire community's small businesses really need that continued rallying as we meander and navigate all the obstacles that continue to arise for our small enterprises.
Thank you. Ms. Mathis?
There is no one in the queue at this time.
Okay. Any last-minute comments from Councilmembers or clarifications or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Harold, I'll go back to my numbers here, please, would you please call the roll on R-2721 to get me temporary easing of restrictions for outdoor dining in our community?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
We now move to item number seven, please.
Resolution number R-2821, matter of extending R-2120 for temporary signage in response to COVID-19 restrictions.
Somebody wants to see the end of the party here?
That's it. This is part two.
We're going to have communications, sometimes those are entertaining, sometimes not, okay.
All right. Motion to approve.
Support.
Is there a motion to approve R-2821, motion by Councilmember Baker, support from Mayor Protem Dean? Mr. Barham, Garden, Ms. Schluto, I'll let you guys take it away. Mr. Baumgarten, Ms. Schluto, I'll let you guys take it away. This is the second part. You are now talking to our interim director of the DDA as well as anybody that is with us virtually here.
Ms. Mayor, along with the relaxation of outdoor dining across the community, we have also been relaxing some of the signage requirements that go along with this in order to allow those that are driving through our community or walking through, any potential customer can be alerted to businesses being open, closed, having different hours, having a sale, any fantastic opportunity there is to dine, shop, or enjoy Berkeley. We have allowed our our businesses to take advantage of some relaxed ordinances. It has not been largely used, but it is something that we would like to continue to offer. Certainly, as items change, this would run along parallel to the timeline that we've indicated for outdoor dining as well.
Right. As a follow-up to the item that we just spoke with in terms of the timelines, those are the same. This is obviously focused on signs, whereas the first one was focused on outdoor dining and easing some of those restrictions. Erin, anything you'd like to add?
No, this really just comes to you. It 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 has gone in tandem with the outdoor dining, so it only seemed right that if we were going to extend one, to extend the other. So it comes before you. There hasn't been any issues, problems, concerns, complaints from any residents that I've heard or business owners. So, you know, if it continues to attract people and bring people in and and show people that we are open and we are a vibrant community, that's why it's before you this evening.
Okay. Ms. Mathis, I'm going to come over to you first. Do we have any folks that would like to comment on this?
Not at this time, sir.
Not at this time, okay. Mr. McGinnis, you don't have to, believe me, you're just the only person outside of that is with us in person. So you'll know, you're not compelled by any stretch, but I do know that you also do like to talk.
Downtown loves signs.
All right. Thank you. That was, that was Mike McGinnis, in case anybody could not see him. He chose not to step up to the microphone, but he does project well enough. Downtown loves signs. Counsel? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you again. It is, I just wonder how the conversation would have been if we had put this one first instead of the, at least they would have been aware that this opportunity. So I think I have a question and a request. A question, and you may have hinted at this, how, what's the uptake on on the extended sign ability and permissions? Do, is there, can you give us any kind of sense as the degree to which the extension or the the relaxation of the of the ordinances have been utilized thus far?
Yeah, they're really, I'm sorry?
I was just only to say it's been slight so far.
Slight, yes, that's, yeah, there hasn't been nearly as many, this was just more as a a method to, for people to do grand openings and, you know, we are open.
Or just, yeah, know that you're open.
And just to let us know that we're open. Now that things have been open for quite some time, there really hasn't been a whole lot of continued need, not need, that's not the right word. There hasn't been a whole lot of people who have continued to do that. So it really was the the very beginning, but given that things are trending in another way, we want to make sure that we continue to offer this as a relaxed incentive for people to to advertise their businesses here in our community.
In case that does happen.
In case it does, hopefully not.
Thank you. Then my my request might be, given our our dynamic DDA director here and and many other fantastic folks that are here to help promote the city, maybe there's a way that we can provide some additional information or some reminders or some ways to help let people know that this is an option available to them. They may choose to make it COVID-related or just general, hey, we're here, we're around, and get the word out. It it seems to me, and I am not a business owner in the city, but it seems to me that this kind of an opportunity to have the ability to put additional signage out can only help, right, to raise awareness, to draw more folks into the city. And so I guess I'm wondering if there's some kind of way that we could put together just even a pamphlet or some kind of resources so that Mr. McGinnis and others can can help let folks know that this resource is available to them. Don't count on it forever because it's a temporary extension of the relaxation of the ordinances, but while it's here, let's at least see if there is any long-term benefit to to reevaluating those ordinances down the road as well. So I think that's my request, really long and verbose, but.
Between Mr. McGinnis and the DDA and Councilmember Blanchard liaising to the chamber, I think let's make sure that we are reinforcing this message so that so that folks know, so that all of our businesses know. Is that fair? Can you handle that? I thought you could.
Thank you. Also, it is nice, too, that there's no fees associated because I know if you have a sandwich board and you want to put it outside, it's, I don't know, I'm not going to say a number because I don't know what the fee is now, but there's a fee for that. So it has, it is nice that that's been taken away. And I think probably to Councilmember Baker's point, many businesses may not know that this has been relaxed, that they can put the signage out, there aren't additional fees. I mean, you can't put it where people are going to walk, but, you know, all the information's there, but to your point, getting the word out, I think, would be really helpful because people may not know.
Especially if we had like some kind of, I don't know, like a parade or something going down 12 Mile. Businesses could potentially, just if they needed to have, it seems like that would be an art festival.
Right.
A street art fest that we just had and an Art Bash that we have upcoming as well. And there's certainly some opportunities to raise visibility with this if folks do decide to do that. And I think that's our way of trying to get more folks to take advantage of this, if if it's something that is, makes sense to them. Any other questions from council members on that? This one is a little bit more straightforward. We're not talking about a potential road closure in the future. Okay. Well, seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on R-2821?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Yes. Would we now move on to item number eight, please, Ms. Harold?
Matter of authorizing the city manager to sign the application for additional service credit purchase for Gina Harold approving two years of additional service credit. This service credit purchase is allowed by the City of Berkeley Merit System of Human Resource Management, Section 1001.08, and meets all the requirements of the MERS Plan document.
I feel like you will have to abstain on this. Is there a motion to approve M-4921?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a pretty robust motion. It does explain sort of the internal logic behind this coming before you this evening. The merit system is, covers basically any of our employees that aren't tied to a a different bargaining unit such as our MAPD or EPW or the police unions. So Gina does fall under the merit system, being an administrative personnel. This is adopted by council, so this benefit is not something that is just developed internally. It is actually, it carries the weight of of an action by council, and Gina is fully qualified under those provisions to take advantage of this benefit that we offer. This does not come without some calculations. The numbers that you see within the memorandum attached are developed by our finance director who works with MERS on coming up with these per their calculations. And these costs are shared by both the employee as well as the city itself. We do find this benefit to be mutually beneficial to both the employee and our overall financial health when it comes to our retirement system. So we like to see people take advantage of this. Thankfully, Gina, as far as I know, plans to stick around for, what, 30, 40 more years, probably? And we're lucky to have her and hope that she has a long and fruitful career right here in Berkeley.
I do want to point out that in the memo from our finance director, Mark Pollak, he does clearly say in here, since Gina is a long way from her retirement eligibility.
Yes.
I think that was to, you know, push off us telling her not to leave any earlier. And I haven't even messed up yet. I haven't called you Ms. Mitchell, as far as I know, at least once tonight, so that also bodes well for us in the future. Additional questions from council? We've seen a number of these, obviously, recently, and it's, there are certain mutual benefits. Certainly, we do not want to see anybody leave our community who does a tremendous job, but there are benefits on both sides and and the contracts are structured in a way to allow this. It's our role as the final governing body to approve them, which we have done in the Seeing no additional questions or comments, almost messed up on purpose that time. Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll on M-4921?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
We have now reached communications, and I believe it is Councilmember Henon's turn to go first, but I am going to start with Councilmember Gavin anyway, so we can work right around.
Thank you, Your Honor. So Planning Commission met, the main topic of discussion was proposed ordinance amendments on a permitted locations for exterior appliance. There are also elections for chair, vice chair, and secretary and liaison appointments to various boards as well. So the next meeting will be Tuesday the 24th at 7:00 PM. And as I indicated last time, the EAC does not meet this month, but a reminder about the Bike Corral that the EAC will host for the Art Bash that was already mentioned earlier on September 11th. And a reminder, if you'd like to volunteer to staff the Bike Corral, you can contact me at rgavin@berklee-mish.net, and we'll get you signed up. And so the next meeting of the EAC will be on September 16th at 6:30. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Henin, that was not a slight to you by starting there. I just wanted to keep it this way. Go ahead.
All right. First with the ZBA, I just wanted to welcome our new members. Their next meeting is tomorrow, August 10th, 7:00 PM, and it'll be the continuation of the case they already started hearing on a home edition. The tree board hasn't met since our net last meeting and, but their next meeting is scheduled for September 13th. However, I'm happy to report the city has been awarded a $4,000 matching grant from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, and this is going to allow us to plant at least 25 additional trees this year in addition to the roughly 200 that were already scheduled to be added. So, and then finally, I just wanted to thank the members of the Berkeley Gardeners who put together the inaugural garden walk on Saturday. It was well organized. My wife and I, we learned a lot talking to the people, looking at their gardens, and got to see some really beautiful things, you know, some hidden gems inside Berkeley. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Thank you. I have some fun Parks and Rec updates. Summer Fest 2021 continues with an outdoor movie in the park tomorrow, Tuesday, August 10th at 7:00 PM. This will take place at Oxford Park, and our featured film is Mighty Ducks. Ducks fly together, Gordon Bombay, who doesn't like a triple deek? Please bring blankets, chairs, or your, and your picnic basket if you choose. Cruise Fest and Dream Cruise are August 20th and 21st respectively, and we have lots of fun in store. The Cruise Fest Parade begins at 6:30 PM on the 20th. Bring your chairs and get a spot on 12 Mile to watch the classic car parade, which goes from Woodward to Greenfield along 12 Mile. Then post-parade activities, we have musical entertainment, you know, because the street's blocked off, so I want to take advantage of that. Musical entertainment, food vendors, street dance party, bouncers. And new this year, Parks and Recreation is hosting another outdoor movie night in front of the Neighbor Shop following the parade. So 7:30, 8 o'clock-ish, they'll be showing Grease. So again, just pick up your chair and move it in front of the Neighbor Shop and enjoy another classic movie. And then finally, Parks and Recreation is hosting an ice cream social in Community Park on Tuesday, August 25th at 5:30 PM. Pre-registration is not required to show up, and what a sweet way to end the summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick updates as well. The Downtown Development Authority DDA Board meets this week's Wednesday in two days' time. And I'd certainly like to help congratulate all of the volunteers and businesses and and residents and artists that came out this past weekend for the Berkeley Street Art Fest. It was a fantastic time. The weather ended up working out pretty well for us, and and I saw folks, young and old, having a terrific time as I walked up and down and had a great time talking with everyone and admiring the tremendous skill of what they brought to to the city here with just little pieces of chalk. It's absolutely amazing. And please visit downtownberkeley.org to to learn more about what's going on in our beautiful, in our beautiful city here and upcoming events. Historical Committee meets tomorrow, August 10th, in the conference room around the corner. And they want to thank all the, all the folks, residents that have been lining up to come in and and visit the museum since it reopened. And, you know, because whether it was your first time or repeat visitor, a splendid time was had by all. I know they're still trying to to be able to receive credit card payments. I'm not sure where that is in the process. It's been a couple of months now. But hopefully, they'll be able to expedite the ability to make an exchange of your money for items from, that commemorate the city's history. I think that'd be a great exchange. The Technology Committee meets next week's Wednesday, August 18th. And again, just a friendly reminder that although the city's website remains unsecure, that's been several months as well, any financial transactions are conducted through a third party. So any financial information, like the upcoming ability to pay taxes online, is done through a third party. So your information will not be at risk with the unsecure website. And finally, it, a quote from David Cuthrell here, who said, "Doing the right thing isn't always easy. In fact, sometimes it's real hard. But just remembering that doing the right, but just remember that doing the right thing is the right thing." And I want to keep this quick. I want to thank all of the residents and folks here in the city that have done the right thing and and gotten the COVID vaccine. We lead many of the cities in the state at exceptionally high vaccination rate, which is fantastic. It goes to the care with which we have for ourselves and our families and our neighbors and and our fellow residents here. And for those who choose not to, I just hope that it's not based on all the false information and and misconceptions that are out there. If anybody has any questions about about the vaccine, its its ability to help protect, especially given the the new Delta thing that's ripping its way through the country, it's it's on its way here and it's already been detected. So whatever we can do to help put your mind at ease and let you know that, to take care not only of yourself, but also, again, for your family, for your loved ones, for your neighbors, for your coworkers, for the places that you go to here in the city and beyond, please do the right thing and help. Because unlike many decisions, this isn't just an individual decision because your decision affects everybody around you. So thank you, and let's continue to do the right thing and and have Berkeley lead by example with a tremendous vaccination rate. Thanks.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Turbrack. Like Councilmember Baker, I'd like to offer big thanks to everyone, the Berkeley Chamber, city staff, and all the volunteers who pulled off yet another amazing street art fest on Saturday. My kids and I had a blast doing crafts, admiring the chalk art, chatting with Davidson, their very favorite artists in the whole world, and reconnecting with so many members of our community in the festive and fun environment. What a great way to showcase our Coolidge businesses and the creative spirit that drives Berkeley forward. Bravo. And finally, with COVID cases on the rise and schools preparing to reopen, I also wanted to urge everyone who is eligible to receive the vaccine to get one. COVID vaccines are safe and effective, and they will protect you, your family, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a bunch of stuff to say.
Saw you run down that thing last minute, too. I almost got you too soon.
The Daily Tribute had a Best of the Best Reader's Choice Awards, and a number of our businesses were selected, and I'd like to read them off.[1685.32] Uh, they were rated as one, two, or three, uh, Berkeley, or the best Coney Island was Berkeley A&amp;W, best family restaurant, number one, was Alex's Berkeley, best ice cream, number two, Clark's Ice Cream, best lunch place, three, third place, was the Lunch Cafe, best Middle Eastern and Lebanese restaurant, number one, the original Mr. Kebab in Berkeley, best collision shop, number two, was Berkeley Collision, best dentist, Dr. Sarah, Dr. Sarah Reddy. Uh, best dry cleaners, number two, was Janet Davis, best eye doctor, Berkeley Iowa and Local Sunglass Company, best tattoo parlor, number three, was American Pride Tattoo, and they were out at the Chalk Fest, giving tattoos to kids, and that was very interesting. Uh, best veterinary clinic, number three, was Berkeley Animal Clinic, best bike store, number, third place, was D&amp;D Bicycles, best bridal store, number one, The Wedding Shop, and number two, Jenny &amp; White, so we got the wedding business pretty well taken up here. Uh, best candy store, number two, was Cindy Bog's Sweet Essentials, best gift shop and boutique, two was Catching Fireflies, and three was Yellow Door Art Market. Best jeweler, number three, was Matt Gross Jeweler Studio, best resale shop was Some Girl Boutique, that was, that was third place, and the best unique store, three, was The Twisted Shamrock. We had a number of great businesses that, that showed up on that list, and I'm proud of all of them. Uh, on my last minute notes, we're making a note that one thing nobody's talked about yet that I almost forgot is, on Saturday, we had the grand opening of Penspiration down on, on Coolidge, a new, uh, arts and crafts store, so, I take one of yours away, Mr. Mayor?
No, it's fine, I, I, I'm glad.
And I also like to thank the Berkeley Chamber for their great efforts at the Street Art Fest, they did a great job, and I'd also like to thank Berkeley America Legion Post 374 for honoring Public Safety Officer Brian Gather, uh, Saturday, in what we hope will be an annual event honoring the Public Safety Officer of the Year. And my quote, "Successful emergency management relies upon experience and expertise." Leo Bonzer.
Will you bring both? Thank you, Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgardner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just, uh, wanna remind everybody that our newsletter comes out every month, uh, it is chock full of great information. A couple of the highlights this month, outside of my bad jokes, are, uh, the Clerk's Office, represented by Ms. Ms. Harold this evening, did note that AV ballot applications, uh, are being mailed out to the permanent list this week, um, that is not to say the ballots themselves, but if that's, uh, what you would like to do, if you'd like to, uh, vote in that way, uh, that application, uh, make sure you return that application in time, so that you can get that mailed to you as well, very convenient, uh, do. It's, uh, fun to talk about election season until it actually gets here, uh, but we are still in that fun phase right now before the, uh, the work that's associated that really starts to ramp up. Uh, next up, our Community Development Department, uh, it has boxes all throughout the city, uh, each of our public buildings, City Hall, the library, the Recreation Department, as well as Public Works, all soliciting feedback and information on our, uh, draft master plan that's out for a 63-day period right now. Uh, we only ask that you get those comments back to us by September 23rd, um, but certainly take a chance, read the document, understand, uh, the vision of the collective vision of the community, uh, as told by you, the, the residents that live here, and that's how, that's how we got to this point, and that's how we will proceed as well, so, um, there's still plenty of opportunity to, to have your voice heard on that item. And then, uh, last but not least, the, um, not just us, but other departments or, uh, community groups facilitate, or, uh, the content that goes into that, uh, this document, so you can read wonderful information from the Chamber, uh, as well as the DDA, uh, all sorts of fun, fun information, and the very last page gives a full listing of all of the different meetings and stuff that come, uh, are coming up in the month of August, so, uh, keep in mind, these are all public and in-person meetings, once again, so we'd love to see you come by and see what's happening, not just at the council meeting, but also the individual groups that make the city wonderful, so, uh, that's my only item, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, nothing new to report this evening, all is well.
When you say that, that is a good thing, I appreciate that. I have a number of things, but you're gonna sense a common theme, because I think just about all of them have been mentioned, I too wanna congratulate, uh, Brian Gather, uh, as the Public Safety Officer of the Year, and I wanna thank the Legion for putting that event together, um, Ike and, and the crew, just a, a tremendous night for Brian, something that I think is going to continue in the future, um, but recognizing the public, uh, Public Safety Officers in our community for what they do on a daily basis, again, these are true community police officers. Many of the things, um, that the, the chief was speaking about in his introduction, who has worse jokes than you, might I add? Um, you know, was, was not just about the life-saving and, and, and the typical things that we think about with Public Safety Officers, it was the times when Brian stopped and played basketball with some kids, or just interacted with people, those are the things that really, that people remember, and that's, that's how they form their perception of our community. It's not just if you do something wrong, they're, they're here when you're doing things that are right as well, and they wanna be here and, and are part of the community, so that was a great night. Certainly wanna congratulate the Chamber, it was the first real citywide event we've had in about a year and a half, um, and it was tremendous, it went off without a hitch to have the event, but also the additional spacing this year, I think, also made other, made, made folks feel more comfortable in being able to walk around, you know, hit, hit some of the different booths and vendors there, but also see the chalk art and do it in a way that allowed folks to remain socially distant and, and feel safe and comfortable out there, um, and, and as was mentioned, Penspiration, um, also with the ribbon cutting, uh, that day as well, where community meets creativity, that is, that is what Penspiration is all about, um, and it's, I imagine, a place that my children are going to wanna visit quite frequently. On the subject of cutting ribbons, Vibe Credit Union, on July 21st, actually officially cut their ribbon on their new, uh, branch, it's not new, but it, if you have driven past, it certainly looks brand new, and if you've been inside, it is definitely brand new. A place that has not been changed in the 41 years that I've been around this community, has seen a significant change, and they, they were able to cut the ribbon on the 21st, it was relatively small, um, there, had some executives there, and their board of directors was there as well, but, on this Wednesday, they're doing an event for the members, um, in the afternoon on Wednesday, and I've been told that there is supposed to be ice cream there, and if not, uh, please go inside and ask to see Tamra, she will certainly help you out, um, if there is not. Um, also, as mentioned, you know, Cruise Fest is coming up, the Art Bash is coming up before our next meeting as well, as has been mentioned, um, and hopefully another Public Safety Golf outing for the one that was, uh, unfortunately canceled, uh, rather last minute. Um, and also, again, please remain vigilant, um, there are new CDC guidelines now, even if you are fully vaccinated, recommending in public indoor settings when there's a lot of people packed in, a substantial or high transmission risk, to please, uh, they recommend wearing a mask. Also, fully vaccinated people might choose to wear a mask, um, if they live with folks who are immunocompromised or potentially at higher risk, again, this is coming back to recommending now, even vaccinated folks, if they want to, to continue to be as safe as possible, recommending that they continue to wear masks in those, in those settings. And for schools, uh, CDC recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, and students, and visitors to schools, regardless of vaccination status, and I say that as well, because school will be back before our next meeting, and our district is following those same rules that were announced just last week, um, that teacher, staff, students, visitors, everybody has to be masked regardless of, uh, vaccination status, and I think that is the correct decision, uh, Superintendent Scott Francis, really, his first, you know, big decisions, getting really thrown into the fire here, but I do certainly support that decision, I, I don't know that he really could have made any other decision, um, him and the school board, and I do support that, and I think it is the, the correct decision for all of our kids, so that they can safely return to school and actually have a school year that is at least more in-person and, um, more like, you know, school should be, uh, I think, for all of the students. And to the teachers, another school year is already here, summer flew by. Thank you for your service and what you do, uh, for all of our kids, and, and last year was especially difficult on, on educators. A former educator, sure, but my wife is an educator still, and I cannot imagine how difficult it was for teachers to be making multiple sets of plans, we're virtually, are we in person, and still trying to educate the children to the absolute best of their ability in just absolutely unforeseen and unbearable circumstances. Hopefully, this school year certainly goes better for them as well. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourn. Support. Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Henon, are there any questions? No, there are not, perfect. Ms. Harold, would you please call the roll?
Price.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Terbrack.
Yes. The August 9th, 2021 meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.